Good morning. Being 9:00 AM, I'll call to order the McHenry County Board Committee of the whole meeting of May 15, 2025, and Ms. Von Bergen will lead us in the pledge today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathy, could you call the roll, please?
Carolyn Campbell.
Here.
John Collins.
Here.
Joseph Gotamaller.
Here.
Terry Greeno.
Here.
Eric Hendricks.
Here.
Carl Kaminski.
Present.
James Kearns.
Here.
Deana Crager.
Here.
Matthew Kunkel.
Here.
Brian Sager.
Here.
Michael Shorten.
Here.
Michael Scala.
Present.
Larry Smith.
Here.
Patrick Sullivan.
Here.
Paul Thomas.
Here.
Gloria Van Hoff.
Present.
Tracy Von Bergen.
Here.
Chairman Bueller.
Here. Having a quorum, I'll entertain a motion to allow Mr. Hendricks and Mr. Kaminski to attend remotely. Mr. Kunkel makes the motion, Ms. Greeno seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Welcome, Mr. Hendricks and Kaminski.
Thank you.
Good morning. Before I give my report to the county board, I ask that you please join me in a moment of silence to honor the memory of Corrections Officer Greg Roluski, who passed away this April. Greg was a corrections officer in the Sheriff's Department for 19 years, and his dedication, generosity of spirit, and quick wit made him a mentor and dear friend to everyone he met. We offer our most heartfelt condolences to his family, friends, and his brothers and sisters in blue. On May 1st, the 6th Annual Operation Dropbox for Veterans Donation Drive kicked off during the month-long event. Residents can donate needed goods at more than 80 sites across McHenry County. We're just about halfway through May, and there's still time, plenty of time, for people to donate to help local veterans and their families. You can find a complete list of needed items and a list of drop-off sites by municipality on the county website at mcHenrycountyil.gov, as well as our Facebook and Instagram pages. Donated items are being collected by our Division of Transportation and sorted by our Department of Health Medical Reserve Corps, and at the end of the drive, the DOT will deliver it to Veterans' Path to Hope in Crystal Lake. Last year, McHenry County collected more than 8,000 pounds of goods that supported more than 3,000 county veterans. Let's work together to make this year even bigger. And as you all know by now, the McHenry County Treasurer's Office mailed out property tax bills last week. The first installment is due June 10th, with the second following September 10th. At our monthly voting meeting this Tuesday, May 20th, Treasurer Donna Kurtz will be making a presentation to the county board regarding the many convenient payment options that property owners have available to them. Like all of our meetings, including this one, you can stream it live or whenever you wish on the county website or on our McHenry County Meetings YouTube page. If you have questions regarding how property taxes are assessed in McHenry County, I encourage you to scroll down to the video section of the county website to watch the presentation that Chief Assessment Officer Alex Benitez made to the county board last month. I also encourage people to make sure for future tax years that they're applying for and receiving every exemption that they're qualified for. You can find a list of them on the Treasurer's website at treasurer.mchenrycountyil.gov. And for the record, McHenry County government accounts for about 6.5% of residential tax With spring in full bloom and summer just a month away, I am once again hitting the McHenry County Conservation District's beautiful trails, and I'm inviting everyone who's watching to come along. Join me on my Next Hike with Mike event from 10:00 to 11:30 AM this Saturday, May 17th, at the Rush Creek Conservation Area in Harvard. We take a leisurely walk and a curated discussion from Conservation District staff, and also get some fresh air and exercise. We get a small peek at McHenry County's natural beauty and everything the Conservation District has to offer. It's free, and there's still spots open. Visit the Conservation District's website at mccdistrict.org to register. And finally, this morning, I'd like to remind county board members that the University of Illinois Extension has invited us to a meet and greet before our next meeting, before our meeting next Tuesday. The informal gathering, which takes place from 5:30 to 6:45 PM right here in the county administration building, gives us an opportunity to connect with Extension staff and learn more about the impactful work that the Extension does throughout our county. And that's all I have this morning. Do any members have comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to reports and presentations. We have two today. First one will be from the McHenry County Board of Health Annual Report, presented by Melissa Adamson, Health Administrator, and Joseph Clark, Board of Health President. Welcome. Pull the switch towards you.
Greg was kind enough to do it for us. So, good morning. Thanks for having us. We're excited to share our annual report with you. I did leave copies at everyone's seat. I know you haven't had time to review it. So, if you have any questions after the presentation or after you've had time to review the full report, please feel free to reach out. There is also a separate flyer. We're working on creating some educational materials to describe what public health is. And so, this one is about epidemiology, because the epidemiologists have a very critical role to play in the work that we do. So, please, we're not going to go through that flyer necessarily today, but it is, we're going to be posting these on our website and create a section that helps to educate the public about the work that we do. So, Mr. Clark is going to, we're going to tag team here. He's going to take the first part of the presentation, and then I will do the latter half.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. My name is Joe Clark. I currently serve as the President of the Board of Health. I'm going to start out as a refresher from last year for some of the board members that are long-term with a little bit of history of the board, and hopefully bring the new board members up to pace with the background of the Board of Health. It was established in 1966 by resolution, meaning that the county board created the Health Department. It was not a referendum from the tax, from the voters. The Board of Health is governed by state statute, which the statute specifies the makeup of the board, or the minimum makeup of the board, and it requires us here in McHenry County to have a 12-member board with a minimum of two physicians, one dentist, one nurse, and a county board liaison. Board members by statute serve a three-year term. They are appointed by you, the county board. You recruit, interview, and appoint the board member to serve on the Board of Health. The county board liaison is appointed by the chairman and the county board for a one-year term. The current membership of the board, we try to do a little better than what's required by the state statute. We have our two physicians, our dentist, we've got three nurses on the board, our county board liaison, firefighter/paramedic, a director from a nonprofit organization in the county, a doctor that is a licensed clinical psychologist. That is the effort that is nationwide to try to address more of the mental health condition, illnesses in the, our country. And so, we've got a very good person with the clinical psychologist, a business owner, and then, woo-hoo, a farmer. That's me. So, that's the current makeup of the board. The, most of what is required from the Department of Health, the Board of Health, is mandated by somebody, whether it be you, the county board, the state legislature, or our federal government. And so, those requirements are passed down to us. Some of the things that the Board of Health is required to do is produce the annual report, which is what we're presenting to you today, and the document that our staff has produced, that is in front of you. We need to review, follow all the state laws that are passed for the health of our population when we get reports, and we often get reports of some condition happening in the county, whether it be foodborne illness, or a bad exposure, bacteria at a beach. On a daily basis, our staff is out there addressing these issues and getting them resolved. We don't often hear about it, because it's handled routinely. We, some, I know for me, I think, well, this only happens once in a while. Uh-uh. It happens. On a daily basis, our staff is out there addressing this stuff and getting it resolved. And then, we pass ordinances and regulations for our businesses and community organizations to follow in their health standards, so that we can keep our community safe. One of our most important jobs is to, oh, go ahead. One of our most important jobs is to hire an administrator for the Department of Health. We do the recruiting, the interview, and the hiring, and the contract negotiations for our administrator, in this case, Melissa Adamson, to run the department on our behalf. As necessary, we will create job descriptions for our employees. We will, with, under your guidance, issue compensation to the employees, and we handle all the expenses from the Health Department, from all the divisions, all, on a monthly basis. Our staff and the Board of Health work with outside agencies, whether it be health departments from the municipalities, the county boards, other county health departments. On a regular basis, there is, there is interaction with those organizations. We're doing everything we can to try to deliver good health to our county. Next one. The, our goal, as the goal of any health department, is to keep people healthy. Good water, good food, good recreation, good sanitation, and so, that is our fundamental job, and our people take it serious. They are dedicated. They, our long-term employees of the county, and we want to recognize that. That's a good thing. Occasionally, we have to adopt ordinances for fee structures, for sanitary issues in commercial buildings, et cetera, and through our committee process and through the board as a whole, we pass ordinances that then come to you for final approval and adoption and become county law. And we, I want to take a moment there to thank you for your cooperation and your support over the years. It has been phenomenal. It's been a very good working relationship. Often, on a monthly basis, there's new contracts that have to be executed for materials, for grants, for hiring contractual personnel. That's something that the Board of Health does. Okay.
I think it's me now.
That's you. On to you.
Okay, so, before we get to some of the components of the annual report, I just wanted to revisit, reeducate people about the fact that we are a certified local health department. So, what that means is that we are required to do mandated local health protection programs, and that includes infectious disease, food protection, potable water, and sewage disposal. We also are required to do a community health assessment and improvement plan. We're required to do that every five years. However, we collaborate with the hospitals that are on a three-year schedule, so we do it more frequently, so that we can collaborate with our community partners, including the hospitals, the mental health board, and now the community foundation going forward. It also requires us to have a 24/7 on-call system in place, and to have an all-hazards emergency response and disaster plan. So, we do do a lot of emergency response planning and preparing, and you heard already that Operation Dropbox is an example of that. We have five divisions. We, last year, as of last year, we had four. We split off, the nursing division was a large division. A good section of that was community health programming, so we split that off, and now we have five divisions. We currently have 121.41 full-time employee equivalents, and this year's budget, the fiscal year '25 budget, is approximately $9 million. 8.9 million of that is for Department 51, so that's the Health Department. Keep in mind, we still operate the tuberculosis program, and that's about $334,000. And then, we have some special funds for animal shelter and Health Scholarship Fund. So, here's more detail about our divisions. So, in administration, we're sort of that overarching operational and planning piece, including our fiscal responsibilities. Our PIO, Public Information Officer, works out of our administration, so they're doing all of the social media, the press releases. We do the grant reporting, although part of that is a shared responsibility. We do the fiscal part, and then our program staff do the program reporting piece. We are also the county registrar for birth and deaths, so we have a large vital records responsibility. And then, of course, our Board of Health, we coordinate the Board of Health meetings, do the minutes, et cetera. In community health, again, they are responsible for the Community Health Assessment and Improvement Plan. That, again, is required as a certified local health department. They do the emergency preparedness, our WIC program, which is Women, Infants, and Children. It's a supplemental nutrition program. Community resources, we play a role, work collaboratively with community partners on opioid response plan. We help distribute Narcan. And we also fund through ARPA a part-time, this person is a staff member, but we've dedicated part of their time to assist the Substance Awareness Coalition ever since their staff person left. So, that's a temporary position to try to help them bridge that gap. In nursing, we do, a big portion of our mandate is communicable disease control. Our epidemiology program works closely with them, and sorry, I, that EPI now reports up through administration. Surveillance and maternal-child health, we also operate the Illinois Breast and Cervical Cancer Program and Illinois Wise Women Program. That is a chronic disease, helps women with nutrition and exercise, heart health-related things. And then, our tuberculosis program is housed under nursing. In environmental health, we have our food protection program, so that's our restaurant inspections, our potable water program, private sewage, solid waste and enforcement planning, our public health nuisance, so your noxious weeds, things like that, surface water in public beaches, and then we operate a water laboratory downstairs. They're on the lower level of this building. And then, veterinary public health, aka animal control, also is housed under the Health Department. Primary purpose there is our rabies vaccination and registration. We also do, are required by law to do bite investigations. We do animal cruelty investigations, nuisance and injured wildlife. We have a small adoption center, and obviously have kennel operations for when we take in stray animals, and do community outreach and education. So, this is going to reflect what you have in your packet. So, last year, we had $7.7 million in revenue. Most of that revenue was non-grant related, and about 40% of it was grant related. We also, you'll see vaccines up here. This is a, vaccines we receive from the state. We are required to record that value in the system. So, we record the value every year, and then it gets reconciled at the end of the year, and fiscal books that for us, and we track all of those vaccines. On the expense side, obviously, our biggest expense is personnel. It's a really big expense. But we try to offset many of those costs with the grants that we get. We typically, any grants that allow for staffing, we do our best to offset some of our personnel costs there. Then, we've got commodities, contractual, and again, the vaccines are those state vaccines that we receive that we need to keep track of. So, these are just, you know, the next few slides are some numbers that we capture. Vital records, again, the births, the certified registered births and deaths. The language line, we utilize primarily for non-Spanish language. We have a lot of staff who are bilingual. We go through a process to ensure that their language meets the requirements, and they receive a stipend for that, and so they are translating and interpreting on a regular basis. Our communications are out of here, which I already said. Okay, moving on. Social media, so this is our PIO. So, we have, the impressions are essentially our reach, and the clicks are more that engagement. That shows who we're engaging with online. So, we've got, we do a lot of social media. We do Google, some TV streaming. Again, a lot of this type of advertising is typically paid for via a grant, is part of the grant Oh, boy. You're not going to be able to see that, at least not on that screen. So, this is our environmental health. You can see, they are a busy bunch. They have a lot of responsibilities. They are out, they cover the entire county, everything from recycling to solid waste management, to our food inspections, and permitting wells and septic. We are a delegated, we have an intergovernmental delegation agreement with the IEP-A to do solid waste site inspections, and, you know, anytime there's like a hoarding situation, we're often collaborating with the sheriff, animal control, and going in and assessing the circumstances of that dwelling. And then, our veterinary public health, again, you'll notice that, you know, one of our main roles is to ensure animals are vaccinated and registered. And we do, to help assist with that, most people get their vaccinations through their veterinarian, but we also offer low-cost microchip events and vaccination events to ensure people are getting their animals vaccinated and staying up to date. We have some volunteers in our animal control that come and help walk the dogs, and play with the kittens, and socialize the animals. So, we certainly appreciate that. Again, this is just an example of some of our programs. This does not cover all of our programming. From our breast and cervical cancer screening program, that is a very valuable program, because a lot of people, and what we see in the people who are coming to see us is they're being diagnosed later. So, this is really supposed to be an early intervention and prevention program. So, we're trying to get the word out, so more women and can be screened, and then provide treatment. We obviously do immunizations. That's a big public health responsibility. CD, whenever there is a foodborne illness, for example, that is something else that is across our division collaboration. We work with, the environmental health staff will go out and investigate the restaurant, take samples. Our CD nurses are calling the individual residents who've complained about their symptoms after eating at a restaurant. So, we do a very elaborate investigation process. Then, our EPIs are looking at all the data and analyzing what the source of that contamination might be. And then, maternal-child health, we do do some case management for high-risk infants. Community health is, again, the community health assessment. We do a lot of wellness screenings under our chronic disease program. Diabetes, we offer diabetes prevention programming. We have staff who are trained to do that. We also operate a medical reserve corps. They helped, they played a huge role in the COVID pandemic response. We offer the opioid surveillance and prevention and response. We have Narcan machines throughout the county where those are supplied with Narcan that we receive from the state, so it's no cost to people. They can just go if they need it. And those have been really successful. And again, then our Women, Infants, and Children's Program, which is the supplemental nutrition program. So, I know we ran through that fast, and that's just a touch to the surface of some of the things that we do. So, if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them now.
Any questions for Melissa or Joe? You must have done a great job explaining everything.
But again, if you have questions later, feel free to reach out. The information, you know, is on your desk. And this is also posted online for anybody who would like to check it out. But thank you for your time.
If I may, there was one more item. Often, we hear these reports, and they're similar from year to year. And you think to yourself, well, what's new? What have we done different? And I want to share that about a month ago, the Department of Health brought all 120 employees together. employees together in, at the American Legion up in McHenry. So shout out to them for assisting us with this event. And we had some motivational speakers, et cetera. I went around the room and I started talking to some of the senior employees. Some of them have been here 30, 35 years. It was the first time that they all came together and were all in one place from all the different divisions and got to, got to meet and greet each other. And it was a huge success, and so I just wanted to share that with you, so that you put a smile on your face that something like that took place. Good thing. And congratulations to you for getting it done.
Thank you. So Peter just asked me to make a friendly reminder. So we are, construction has started at our Crystal Lake facility. So the clinic side, staff had already been relocated, we're using some space at Mental Health Board, and then the other staff, we were able to incorporate over here in Annex A. So animal control is still operating out of that facility despite all of the construction right now, but we are going to monitor the situation and we're going to have to adjust access to the building for the public. The staff will still be working, but you'll see a press release coming out to adjust access to the building because we want to keep people safe. But we are, I assure you, we're still operating as usual. We will be communicating to the public or individuals, you know, if we have a stray pickup, you know, we will be working with individuals on how they can come and pick up that animal so that it's safe. We're working with the construction team too, on the barriers and signage. So you'll just see that it's going to look like a, the other day, it looked like a pile of rubble. So if you have any questions about that, we will plan to do a grand opening when the new building is complete, which either will be by the end of this year or early next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a 2050 Plan update presented by John Housel, principal, co-founder of Housel Levine and Adam Wallen.
All right. Good morning. Adam Wallen, Director of Planning and Development. Before I turn it over to John, I'm going to take like 60 seconds or so to kind of frame the conversation. So the 2050 Plan itself has multiple purposes, multiple uses. But first and foremost is going to be without it, the county cannot adopt land use, anything, can't adopt an ordinance, can't adopt any land use standards, temporary uses, any of that. So this sets the framework for us moving forward in how we want to develop. With that, the, the, the plan itself is the outward-facing statement from the County Board on multiple topics of how we want to develop. So whether that's infrastructure, agriculture, economic development, going down the list, this sets that stage, right? John Housel is, is one of the brightest minds in our industry. We were excited to bring him in. We're excited to have him here today. We were excited to bring him in back in 2022, when the County Board first looked at this project and said, all right, how do we want to approach this? So what's the formula that we actually wanted to use? Consultant-led, Regional Planning Commission was assembled. That's the consultant, John will get into some of the details on that. The Regional Planning Commission itself was a very diverse group of, of residents, of professionals within the county. So they had, they had their own perspectives and they're experts within being, being a McHenry County resident. They interviewed, they were appointed by the Board. That, that commission got started in March of '23, within, and kind of was with any big project. Some things went sideways. Within nine, 10 months, that, we lost our chair, we lost another member of the commission. We lost our project manager from, took a bigger and brighter job. So we had a very strategic meeting, realigned our direction. We went from quarterly meetings to monthly meetings, extended monthly meetings to the point where we were going six to eight, six to nine-thirty sometimes. A lot of very good discussions with our project manager. We got a new project manager in, but we also had a good meeting with John and his partner. They filled that gap. They came to the table, they rose to the occasion, they did what they needed to do to keep this project going and kind of keep this target of, of getting here today. So the result is this draft plan. All of those plans, all of those discussions, they all fed into what we're, what we've shared. I shared this plan with, with all of you yesterday in a PDF version. We shared the website where the project website lives and some of the previous versions. We can give you hard copies if you're a hard copy person. We'll make it, make it so that you can react and make it so you can see it. There's, there, in addition to that, the next step, I guess, is the exercise. Over the next couple of weeks, we're going to look for your opinion. So this is that final stage where the County Board has this, this is the opportunity to say for how we want it to develop, whether it's agriculture or economic development, housing, et cetera. We're excited to hear your opinions. We'll give you those, those channels to, to supply those opinions and always pick up the phone and call us. But right now, we'll turn it over to John Housel for the real show.
Thanks, Adam.
Yeah, no problem. Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Good morning, everybody. John Housel with Housel Levine. Thrilled to be here this morning. It's been a, a road to get here. It's been a lot of involvement with a lot of people, providing a lot of their time volunteering on behalf of the county to get us across the finish line with some, as Adam said, some bumps along the way. So I think the previous presenters with regarding to the Health Department and some of their things, did a very good job of going through, as she said, a lot of material in a very short amount of time. So in keeping with that theme, strap in, because I'm about to go through about 200 pages of text maps and graphics, recommendations and policy in a fairly quick amount of time. I'm one of nine kids. I talk fast and loud, so if I get going too fast, just tell me to throttle back and I can slow down a little bit. But my objective here this morning is to provide, if nothing else, a good orientation into the process and an orientation to this document. As Adam said, we're looking for all feedback. Until the gavel comes down and this is adopted, it is a work in progress. Very proud of the document we have before you today to consider and review, so we get your comments later to hopefully get this adopted. So with that, I'm going to go through a presentation, see if I hit the right buttons. All right. So real quick, I'm going to just introduce our team. Again, Housel Levine, I'm John Housel, was the lead consultant for this project. Real brief background, many of you maybe know who we are, some of you may not. We did the McHenry County Comprehensive Plan that you currently have adopted several years ago. We worked with you on that. That won the state of Illinois' best comprehensive plan the year it was adopted, out of all the comprehensive plans conducted in the entire state. We work all across the United States. Our primary office is Chicago. We've got about 30 employees. We probably have more AICP and FAICP people on staff than even larger firms. I personally have worked on over 200 comprehensive plans in about 30 states across this country. So when Adam said, I do a lot of this, trust him, I do a lot of this. Also on our team, and I want to introduce who else worked on this, it wasn't just us, but GeoSynTech, KLAO A, Maguire Iglesky, MIA Architecture and Solutions in the Land. If you've gone through this document, you can see how robust some of these chapters are with regard to the environment, water, infrastructure, transportation. Those are professions and expertise that are tangent to and parallel to urban planning and land planning and growth. They are important components of that, but they are an attachment to it. So GeoSynTech did a lot of the work with regard to the environmental sustainability, your very robust Water Resources section and green infrastructure components. Solutions in the Land really worked a lot with your agricultural policies, preservation, and green infrastructure. KLAO A is a firm focusing on transportation and civil engineering. They have worked in this county and in the Chicago region for decades. We have teamed with KLAO A on probably 40 different comprehensive planning assignments over the last 20 years. And Maguire Iglesky is an architecture firm, and one of their specialties is historic preservation. So Maguire Iglesky came on board to make sure we hit historic preservation for the county correctly. So this is the team that really dialed into their specific areas of expertise, and I think that's important to note on the front end. I'm going to go through an overview of the process, a brief overview of the chapters, I will, hitting the high notes. We can get into Q and A as much detail as you want. We have a PDF of this document. Here's the hard copy. We have a PDF of that, so if anybody wants to this morning get into any page or any sentence or any wording, I don't know that we want to get to that detail today, but if we want to, we have the PDF queued up and we can look at any page you want to look at and talk about it. And then we can open it up, of course, to any Q and A anybody has. The first thing I'm going to go through is the planning process. If anybody's ever seen me speak at a comprehensive plan, forgive me because you're going to hear this again, planning is really only three things. It's where are we today, where do we want to go, and what do we have to do to get there? Doesn't matter if you're planning a 20-year comprehensive plan for a county or you're planning your daughter's wedding for next October. If you don't hit those three things, your process is flawed. It's those three things. Where are we right now? Where do we want to go? And what do we have to do to get there? And this process followed those three fundamental components. We broke it down into seven steps. I'm going to go through the seven steps just to highlight what was done and the outreach that was conducted along the way. So right now, we're at step number seven, and that is the adoption process and going through those appropriate meetings and review. Again, community outreach was done throughout the entire process. It was extensive. So right off the bat, you can see, I'm going to turn here because it's tough to see, what's hyped, what's listed is all the different steps for that particular task, but I'm going to go over to some of the community outreach that was conducted and community feedback. This wasn't something that was developed in a vacuum. This isn't something where we came to the table with an agenda. This isn't something we were looking at just getting something on paper because it was a national trend. If it wasn't right for McHenry County, it didn't make it in the end cut. A lot of issues were discussed, some stuck, some didn't. But all along the way, we tried to reach consensus and robust discussion before we moved on to the next step of the planning process. So we hear step number one, project initiation, meeting with the Regional Plan Commission. Then you get down to step two, community engagement, project websites, map.social, online mapping engagement platform, online questionnaires. We did key focus interviews with several stakeholders in several different groups, boards and commissions workshops, where we had representatives from several boards and commissions. And then we met with municipalities and rare representations on six different occasions throughout the process. There's a snapshot of the website. This is map.social. You see there where people could include, let's see, I think this is a, I was trying to get a laser pointer, but I don't know which, there it is. So this is map-social, it's a screenshot, and people are able to identify points, problematic intersections, key development sites, areas of conservation, public safety concerns. They can map whatever they wanted to on their computer, their phone, their laptop, and it would all aggregate into an online ArcGIS system where we could actually map community outreach across the county. And we also had detailed questionnaires for the comprehensive plan. Some of the key takeaways from all of this were these six things that began to, or seven things that began to surface as predominant themes. So supporting attainable housing, and that just means as the demographics change and as the population age, do we have the right types of housing in different areas to meet a changing population? So it's the needs of McHenry County now, but also future populations and citizens of McHenry County. Protecting water resources and supplies. A few states are beginning to require water resource chapters in their plans. There's only a handful. It's not required in Illinois, and the chapter for water resources in this document is more robust than a lot of the states we work on where they have that element. So really, a good job here. Smart growth decisions, making sure we're not leapfrogging or prematurely developing agricultural or open space areas. That was a key theme. Improving active transportation. Active transportation is a fancy word for walking and biking. Promoting McHenry County's open space and ag land, exploring sustainable resources and renewable energy, and alleviating traffic congestion. So these are some of the key themes that we heard. So as we move down into the next few steps, we review past plans and studies, another RPC meeting, community visioning workshops, RPC, another working meeting, boards and commission workshop again, scenario planning workshop, I'll get into the scenario planning in a little bit. We did a little bit of science mixed in with the art of planning. For far too long, for decades, in fact, planning has been too anecdotal. Colors on a map, but not a lot of science behind the decision-making. And we tried to change that here so policy had a hat to hang on, you know, you could hang your hat on why things were done. And then another, more meetings and more workshops. We had pretty good communication. This is the visioning workshop where people worked in large groups, people worked in small groups with their neighbors. We tried to mix it up, so you had to work with people you didn't walk in with, and we think that's kind of important. But to begin to identify what they wanted to see where in McHenry County and maybe what they didn't want to see in McHenry County, this is all important information. And again, this is an RPC meeting and some more workshops that we did. These are all different events. And then the last step, seven, again, web series meetings, staff virtual meetings, RPC meetings again, community presentations and open houses. We had a lot of people participate in the open house. And then a final plan to the County Board, that's where we are today. So, and this is just the last meeting we have. You can see my professional wardrobe is fairly limited. I'm thinking we're the exact same thing sitting there at that table. But this was the last round that we had where we actually put boards up, and a lot of people from the community came up and they spoke, and a lot of them agreed with what we did. Some people had some discussions they wanted to discuss, and the RPC diligently and robustly discussed everything in front of people who raised concerns to get everybody's opinion. So it was a really good meeting. This is important, I think, also, we tracked in some of our survey responses where people lived in the county who were participating, because lots of times when you do this, everybody is vocal from one area of the community, and that's not reflective of the entire community. And here you can see the, the distribution of people who responded really represent the geographic diversity of the community. And again, this just lists all the different things that was done. So with that, what I'm going to go through, I just want to give you a sense of what's been taking place over the last couple of years that we've been working on this document. So this is the plan structure. There are 11 different chapters. I'm going to go through these pretty quickly, again, just to get it on the record, then we can go to Q and A. I don't think you want me reading you 100, I say it's 200 pages. I lied, it's 195 pages. So introduction, community profile, vision and themes, land use and development, agricultural resources, housing, economic development, transportation, water resources, green infrastructure, energy infrastructure, historic preservation and implementation. And you can look at most city or county plans in the state of Illinois or other states. This is a, again, a much more detailed and truly comprehensive document than most. And this goes to your citizenry and the people who are in charge of putting this together. First chapter is the introduction. It's the process that was undertaken, how we developed the plan, what the purpose of the planning document is for McHenry County, and it identifies, again, what is a plan, how is it created, and how you're supposed to use it. It's a straightforward introduction into the document. The next one is community profile. This is important for a couple of reasons. Five years from now, someone should be able to look at this document and see what was at play at the time the plan was created. If five or 10 years from now, someone looks at the document and says, boy, what were they thinking five years ago when they wrote this? What was going on in the county? This is that snapshot. This is that community profile. So it's really broken down into a few different pieces, and that is in-person outreach. We summarize all the outreach and events. I just highlighted, we summarize it. We identify what the issues were, the priorities were, and the aspirations were, and what people think in the county, the county ought to be working on. The next section of the community profile section is demographics, pretty straightforward stuff. Population, age, race, education, income, employment numbers, housing numbers. And then we did a pretty detailed market analysis, so people knew what the economics were at the time. Residential, different types of residential, industrial, employment, office, retail. So people knew when we made land use decisions, we had a firm understanding and a realistic understanding of what the market viability was for those uses. So we weren't recommending a use there simply was not a market or projected market for, because that's not realistic. So that's in the community profile section. The next section is vision and themes, and this came primarily from a couple of different sources. All of the outreach combined, 750 points of input from different folks. We looked at all those issues, those priorities, the visioning workshops, the interviews that we conducted, the meetings we had, themes began to emerge, aspirations were articulated, what people wanted to see or didn't want to see was very well-known. So with that, we developed three different things. I don't know, why should I be pointing this? Because sometimes it doesn't work. Oh, there we go. So there was a vision statement, and a vision statement is an aspirational statement for what it is the county hopes to achieve over the next 10 to 20 years. It is meant to be sort of proactive, visionary, and aspirational. It is not a recommendation. It conjures and articulates a character of the county, a sense of place that the county will be in the future. In looking at all of the outreach and input that we received, a lot of the input fell into a few different umbrella categories, you might say. Sustainability and resiliency, that goes with balancing growth. Sustainability and resiliency, that goes with balancing growth, preventing premature conversion of agricultural open space, making sure sprawl didn't displace a lot of that pristine land in the county, and that growth was balanced going forward. The next was public health and wellness, timing with the presentation we just had. It's maybe the most rapid-growing lens through which planning is done nationally is one from a perspective of health. People want to live in healthy places. They want their children to grow up healthy. They want to live to be 100 years old. Most of us do, maybe not everybody. But it's hard to debate or counter the notion of can we create a healthier place to live? So that was a very important one, that people ought to be able to live here at all stages of life and live in a healthy, well-supported type of community. The next one is diversity, equity, inclusion, and this simply states the county wants to be a welcoming community. They want to be welcoming as people change, as the demographics change, as people age. Aging in place, to be welcoming in this regard for someone who's aging is to make sure they have housing options here and don't have to move out of the county when they can no longer maintain their single-family home. Right? So it's not about changing who you are, which being maybe a little bit more responsive version of yourself. The next chapter is land use and development. Land use and development is the core or the nucleus of every comprehensive plan. Historically, comprehensive plans were simply land use plans. That's it. And the land use plan basically had four things. A map with four colors. Green for open space, yellow for residential, red for commercial, purple for industrial. They were pretty basic maps, and that's all they were. Then a guy named TJ Kent came along about 100 years ago and said these should be called general plans, and then he started combining land use with transportation. And it has now evolved into comprehensive plans, and they are truly robust, as evidenced by all the elements and chapters I went through. But land use and development is at its very core. So we look at existing land use patterns and municipal growth areas and land use planning. And this is where, you can see here, some of these different areas that are, and I'll just show you here real quick. So incorporated areas in 2000 is the pink. Incorporated areas in 2001 to 2010 is a brighter red. And then incorporated areas 2011 to 2021, you can see these darker areas where municipalities had begun to grow. So these areas show areas within the county, but they are incorporated areas within municipalities. And this begins to show some of the different areas that are designated for conservation and ag versus areas where we anticipate growth. There are four key takeaways here. Balancing growth and development with preservation. Coordinating with county municipalities and townships for future land use. A lot of the development's going to take place in the county. In fact, most of it is going to be within or immediately adjacent to municipalities. It's not going to be out in the middle of nowhere. The plan does a very good job of making sure that's the case. Guide annexation into municipalities where appropriate and encouraging sustainable land use. We did a couple of things here that I think are important. We looked at three different scenarios. We didn't just start putting colors on a map. The first scenario was to look at all your current adopted plans, your current adopted county plan, and are you municipalities in the county's comprehensive plans to see where they think they are going to grow over the next 20 years? And what we found is that more than 37,000 acres of new estate residential, low-density residential, would be developed within the incorporated areas. So if we just took what was on the books today, you're looking at 37,000 new acres of development in the county just for residential uses. All right? It would be projected to be up 52,000 to over 100,000 dwelling units, and it would be, and this is a big number, contribute to about a 20% loss of ag land. If we actually followed through and echoed what all the planning on the books was right now, about a 20% loss of ag land. That was scenario one, and we mapped that out. The next scenario was to look at this strategic aquifer recharge area, SARA overlay, right? So we sort of said, okay, if we prioritize aquifer recharge and the overlay of these areas as a priority, what would that mean in terms of a land use scenario and a growth accommodating future growth projections? It would accommodate about 61,000 households. So remember, the previous one was a lot more than that. It would result in about 18,000 fewer acres of residential than the previous one or adopted plans. But it would also severely begin to limit industrial or employment uses because of the locations for these things. And infill development would not be supported in some municipalities extraterritorial areas if we strictly protected all the aquifer areas based off the SARA approach. So fairly restrictive and probably not realistic in terms of accounting what we need to accommodate in the county and the municipalities for growth projections. The third one was to look at projected population capacity, and we looked at CMAP and other sources to see what the likely or realistic projection was of population growth in McHenry County. This is the big deal. It would accommodate just over 8,000 acres of new development. Remember the previous one, right? 37,000 acres was the first one, if we just went like we've been doing, status quo, right? So the new one, one from 37,000 acres to 8,000 acres of new residential development, right? You're talking about approximately about 27,000 new households in total, a fraction of what the more robust one was. Anticipated development capacity aligns with additional to meet all the projections through 2050. We don't have to show everything is developed like the previous plans do. And agriculture and open space would be reduced by only about 2% as opposed to 20% in the first one. So this approach does a much better job of protecting environmental areas and agricultural lands than the previous models did. So this is the approach that we were leaning towards when we developed the land use plan. And then this is the new land use plan that we came up with for the future. It accommodates 8,000 acres of new residential development, anticipates an additional 27,000 unincorporated households, only about 2% loss of ag land, and it intensifies development in strategic locations. And I'll get into this when I talk about housing. Most of the development, almost all the development projected in this plan to happen to accommodate the proposed population increases and employment increases happen within or immediately adjacent to municipal areas that will likely be annexed. So again, preventing premature development or leapfrog development out into natural areas, environmentally sensitive areas, or valued agricultural lands. And then what this does, it identifies and describes each one of the land use types, and there are several of them. So each one of the land use types in this map, agricultural estate residential, low-density residential, medium-density, high-density, mixed-use, commercial, institutional and civic, industrial, open space, all of those are described with a picture and text so people know what it is we're talking about. I'll go through these next one a little bit more quickly, but those previous ones, those are sort of core components. Agricultural resources section begins to identify here the key takeaways. Identify and deploy strategies to preserve it, preserve ag uses and provide oversight, promote soil health erosion, abatement of water conservation, and address and combat impacts of climate change in agricultural uses. This is what the chapter looks like. I'll go through and I'll show the key takeaways for each chapter, and then sort of a spread of what the chapter begins to look like as an introduction to each one of the chapters. But this is the agricultural section. And again, it came through real clear as a priority to protect agricultural lands as much as possible in the county as we accommodate future anticipated growth. The next one is housing. Housing is probably, I didn't even say the word probably, probably remove that, is the number one issue that every community we've worked with in the last eight years is dealing with, and everybody deals with it differently. There is no silver bullet, there is no one approach. There's a lot of literature out there on what housing solutions could be. Some communities use them, some communities use different ones. It's different everywhere. What it reflects, though, is a growing population, an aging population, a recognition that aging in place should be something every community provides, that you can live where you live in the community you live in as you age, and to maybe do a better job of not necessarily increasing densities, but providing a wider range of housing options to meet the needs as people age and enter into your community. So the key things here, expand housing choice, encourage growth in strategic locations, not everywhere, and incentivize the future use of planning practices such as a 15-minute mile or 15-minute neighborhood. This primarily really affects those urbanized existing areas in municipalities, not out in the county. I just want to draw your attention to this real quickly. Anything in color, not gray, is a designated land use for residential. State residential is a really, really light yellow, right? Low-density residential, you can see that is a little bit darker like this, low-density. Medium and high-density, you'll see little pockets of them in municipalities or right next to them, or like islands surrounded by the cities. And then mixed-use adjacent to existing commercial or mixed-use areas, there's a couple of them within the cities or vacant areas within the cities. So even though we've tried to embrace the idea of providing a greater range of housing product or offering, it does a really good job of preserving the county for low-impact, low-density estate residential, keeping the little bitty areas that we did note for medium or higher densities really tucked into adjacent, within, or in pockets in already municipal areas. And I think that's important. This again goes through what the chapter begins to look like. We show all of our goals, our objectives are broken down by category, by objectives, and then we identify the specific things that can be done. So objective here talks about the 15-minute neighborhood. Then we give several examples and specific tasks that can be done that the county can consider if they want to further this. We also give case studies to explain certain things that may be terminology we use along the way. If you step away from the mic, we can't hear you on the live stream. Somebody's lucky they can't hear me. All right. All right, I'll take this out because I tend to wander. All right, economic development is the next one. Economic development has land use implications, but it's not simply economic. So identify strategic locations for commercial and facilitate workforce development opportunities to prepare youth for careers. So again, you can see here a map of the county. You can see a limited but very strategic location for commercial and industrial land uses. The idea here is to minimize impact on open space and farmland, to put these things near where resources, utilities, and infrastructure already exist or are adjacent to, to prevent the unnecessary extension and cost of extending utilities and resources out to remote areas to facilitate intense industrial or employment uses. And so again, this is some of the recommendations and how it's done. One of the things we mentioned in this one is the notion of agrotourism. Again, it might be something you're not familiar with. So as an example, we have these call-outs that are either case studies or sort of planning 101. We explain some of the terminology that may be represented in the document if it's a little bit of an anomaly or not as conveniently straightforward. Transportation is a huge component of comprehensive planning. In most comprehensive plans where a transportation master plan is already on the books, we're not reinventing the wheel, and we're not looking to change things. We're looking to make sure that the plan you have on the books is represented and dovetails with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. You had a transportation master plan 2050 for the county, and the job of the comprehensive plan was to make sure that those transportation recommendations in your 2050 transportation master plan from McHenry County is reflected in this chapter and in this document. So this document is not recommending something that is contrary to or undermining the recommendations of your transportation master plan. So this is not wholesale different. It largely reflects recommendations that are already in your transportation master plan. We just put them in this location so people could see the correlation between land use economics, employment, housing, transportation, mobility, things like that. So vision zero, safe for all users, completed and connected networks, efficient movement of people and goods, mobility and access for all, and protecting environmental resources. And sort of here's one of the figures that we include, this is from your 2050 long-range transportation plan. And again, same sort of thing. We talk about a key goal, and then once we identify the goal, we put in there specific components or recommendations of actions that can be taken to further a goal. Water resources, this is again a chapter that most plans simply don't have, so hats off for the county for recognizing its importance. Most states that require this are states where water is a huge issue. California, Colorado, Arizona, Washington, things like that, Montana. So key takeaway, sustainability and groundwater resources, increase opportunities to collaborate with the communities, work to address overarching water quality issues, and contribute to improve stormwater. This is a pretty detailed chapter. I would encourage you to really sort of roll up your sleeves and, no pun intended, wade into it. It is a really eye-opening document, and when you read it, I think hats off to the county's professionals that worked on this. Really is a great chapter that identifies and rightly values water as a resource for this county and the need to protect it going forward and manage it appropriately. Green infrastructure correlates with this. Everybody knows what regular infrastructure is, roads, sewer. Green infrastructure could be bioswales, drainage ditches, repairing in corridors, wetlands, flood zones. These are the natural ecological systems or the man-made but green-designed, not gray, infrastructure systems that help the county function better for storm events on a ecologically sound way going forward. This is something that counties sometimes have the advantage of doing a better job of because they're not all urbanized, and a lot of those ecological systems still are in place, which is a good thing. So again, examples of some of the things that we've mapped, all your wetlands, your open spaces, your corridors, your natural areas. So to conserve sensitive natural open areas, improve stewardship for the natural areas, update McHenry County's green infrastructure plan, which you've got if you didn't know that. Review and update conservation development principles and ordinances, and we give a lot of direction on this. Expand greenway and trail connections and preserve, expand, and restore your oak woodlands. You've got some incredible open space areas already protected and identified, so you're a step ahead of where some of your peer counties might be. And again, this is a really educational chapter, I think. If you're focused more on the developed aspects of the county, this is sort of an eye-opener and a nice one to read, so. But it identifies all the different things you have and the ways to preserve and manage those. Next one is energy infrastructure. This one is a little bit different. Again, a lot of chapters, a lot of comprehensive plans don't have energy infrastructure. It talks about energy efficiency in existing buildings, creating targeted and proactive approach to renewable energy, promoting energy conservation, and plan for EV charging station infrastructure over time. It's not looking for you necessarily to get out ahead of the pack, but to make sure that you're meeting pace with these new demands as they come online. What you'll see here are some potential solar farm locations or solar farm locations that are mapped in the county right now. Is an example graphic. And this again talks about the different types of energy. So promote energy conservation and public education. You'll see it for objective three. And then we talk about the different ways you can promote energy conservation. Plan for EV charging stations. We have recommendations on how you can begin to do that appropriately, working with municipalities over time. Historic preservation is the next one. A lot of the historic assets are in the municipalities, but some of them exist in the unincorporated areas of the county. And as part of a PR campaign, as part of tourism, as part of just the heart of who you are and your sense of place and identity, historic preservation is important because once these assets are lost, you're not getting them back. And so this section of the plan works with your historic preservation commission, their recommendations and their guidance, working with Maguire Iglesky Architects to make sure the recommendations in the comprehensive plan reflect the county's overall commitment to historic preservation. So again, identify and plan for the enhancement of historic rural crossroads and local main streets in semi-rural and urban communities. Identify and plan for the preservation of county's rural landscapes, including your historic oak groves and scenic roads. That's a unique historic asset that I think some people aren't aware of, is they think of historic assets, they think of a building or a barn or architecture. You've got some natural historic assets that are remarkable that deserve preserving. Invest in the county's historic resources through policy and funding, and then coordinate with local municipalities because so many of the county's historic resources in the county are located within municipalities. And then a collection, again, in this chapter of different very specific objectives, and underneath each objective are a series of actionable recommendations to help the county achieve that objective. And I will stop right here, but before we get into the last chapter, implementation. I think it's important to understand, a comprehensive plan is not regulatory. A comprehensive plan is not zoning. It doesn't dictate what you can and cannot do with your property. It doesn't dictate a decision you have to make on a pending development or rezoning matter. A comprehensive plan is a foundation for decision-making. It is a document with policy and recommendations that you can use to become a bit more informed to help you make better decisions when something is proposed in front of you as a group. If a rezoning is requested, doesn't meet the county's long-term objectives. You can use this as a guide to evaluate that proposal. A development proposal for a new institution or a new employment development, is it in the right location? Is it consistent with the long-term economic and housing and workforce and land use distribution for the county? Or does it need a little bit of revision? The plan will help you make an informed decision. If your public works department, street department, or environmental folks are looking to make a CIP improvement, they have funding, where do we prioritize it? A repairing and corridor reclamation project? Bike pass along a couple of major roadways or a new roundabout route? Maybe it's an example of the comprehensive plan Maybe it's an example of the comprehensive plan has identified priority improvements people want to see and priority improvements that are needed to achieve the goals of this document. So when a capital improvement project or allocation for an infrastructure investment is brought forward, you can say, well, this one does a good job of taking off these recommendations. This one isn't really even mentioned in the comprehensive plan. Let's not do that one. But these ones hit a lot of points. So it should be used to help inform investment and budgeting over time. It's not regulatory. It is information gathering, and it is advice to you to be used as you want to when you consider decisions over time on development, land use, growth, infrastructure, and spending. The implementation chapter is always the last chapter of the document. It is a policy document, but we want them to be action-oriented. And again, when you pass this, there aren't a fleet of bulldozers hiding over here behind this building ready to roll out when the gavel comes down because you're going to do all this stuff. This is a 20-year guide, all right? Markets will change, dynamics will change, populations will change. This is a 20-year guiding document. With that in mind, we identify how this can be implemented over time, the potential partners the county will need to work with to get this done. County can't do everything. You'll have to identify appropriate partners to get certain things accomplished, economic development tools to get them done, and then time estimates for each one of these actions. We then go through the entire document, 200 pages, and we identify everything that is an actionable thing, something that could be done or worked toward. We then identify what that task is. We number the objective in the table. We identify the page that it is on, so you can go read about what it is and why it's important and how to do it. And then we identify is sort of the time estimate, midterm, short-term, long-term, and who some of your key partners are if you're going to really get serious about getting that thing done. So this 200 pages of documents with text, graphics, maps, and recommendations all boils down to several pages of actionable things tied back to specific objectives that you can work on over time to move the needle. And this is the last chapter of the plan, and it's broken out by chapter, by objective, by page number, by task, by priority in terms of timing, and who you should be partnering with to get it done. So I told you I was going to go through a lot quickly, but I wanted to give you an orientation as to this document, and maybe more importantly, to the process that was done to undertake this. And I do want to say a special hats off to the RPC. They did an amazing job of going through this line by line, paragraph by paragraph. If anybody had an issue, it wasn't swept on the rod, it was debated. Sometimes things were debated, and a straw poll was taken before we moved on to the next thing to make sure that issue, everybody was good with it. And it really reflects the input of a lot of residents, a lot of your neighboring and partner municipalities and townships or villages throughout the county, as well as the RPC and Adam and his staff. So with that, thank you so much. I know that's a lot, but open it up to any Q and A anybody has.
Ms. Greenow?
Yes, so we had the workshop that one day. Is this a situation now where we'll have another committee time set as a whole to discuss this? Will it only be discussed in the committee of the whole? Do we vote on this for approval? What is the process from the board's perspective?
Next steps.
Yeah, so next steps is going to come up after we get through questions anyway. And so head right off the bat. The next step will be to go through PED. So that would go through, over the next couple of weeks, we'll get comments, have those conversations. However, you want to communicate your thoughts. If it's in person, perfect. We'll give you an avenue and a channel to send emails through in your writing. And then when it's ready, we'll get that in front of PED to deliberate. If it's then approved by the committee to go forward to the county board for adoption, then it'll come back to committee. Otherwise, it'll stay in, it'll come to the committee of the whole, the full county board. Otherwise, it'll stay in PED until.
Mr. Goddard-Bowler?
Yeah, there's a couple of questions that I still have about this. If you go back to your Chapter 4, your economics, your scenarios, you have Scenario 3 there. And Scenario 3, you talk about we're going to find a place for 27,000 people. And then I know on the drafts that I've read, you've got different levels of densities in those different categories. I don't know if this draft has addressed that. I know Mr. Wallen and I have talked about it on a couple of occasions. As McHenry County has no countywide infrastructure in terms of septic disposal or sewage treatment plants. And as a result, when you start talking about densities, for instance, on the draft, the last draft that I read, you were talking about estate densities at two units to an acre. We don't have that. We don't have that, you know, as a county, we don't encourage that because that means you're putting a septic system on a half acre. And our current ordinance requires us to find, not just when you develop a lot or subdivide a lot, that you have a place for two septic systems, the one that you're going to build and the one that you're going to build 20 years from now when it fails. And so it won't fit on an acre of land. And so when we are projecting that we're going to have a place for people and we're going to use that density level, that number doesn't work. And so that's one thing I was concerned about is that we're projecting densities and we're saying they're going to be here. I know at one point in time, your high density is talking something like eight units or nine units to an acre. You're not building eight units or nine units to an acre on our current septic design ordinance. You can connect to a city's utility system, and I know other counties have done other things. Mr. Austin is familiar with Lake County where they actually have a countywide sewer treatment facilities. We've never, as a county, decided to have ever taken up the idea that we would have a separate sewage treatment facility for the whole county. And I don't see that happening anytime soon. But if you use those numbers and, you know, those densities and project them into this plan, you'll have a plan that supposedly accommodates this future growth pattern, but it won't work from day one. Okay? Because those numbers aren't real numbers, because we don't have a septic treatment plant or sewer plants that will accommodate those densities. So that's the first problem. The second problem is, is that, I mean, 15-minute walkable neighborhoods sound fine if you're in a town. We're not in a town. We're in a county. There is no place that you can go in McHenry County and going to get walked 15 minutes to a grocery store and be in an unincorporated McHenry County. And so that was the second area that bothered me. The third thing is I don't think people realize that SAR, which is the strategic, you know, water resource areas, is also the primary areas for gravel mining, which has been in McHenry County's history, one of the major economic developments in McHenry County. I don't mind preserving SAR, but I want us to acknowledge the fact that we have a competing use for that property. I don't think we mention gravel industry in this plan until we get to economic development, eight or nine chapters into it. And yet, I know that if I propose a gravel pit out in the middle of the county right now, I'm going to have a huge fight on my hands. And yet, we haven't really addressed that. So those are three areas that I'm concerned about when I see this plan come forward. I don't think those numbers are valid numbers is probably the most important one, because you've got, you've got to give us densities that we're likely to build if you're going to project that. And if you project one acre unit developments, you're going to have a lot more acres used than the 8,100 you're projecting here. Anyway, thank you.
Ms. Benhoff?
Good morning. Thank you so much for that presentation. It was very comprehensive, and I like that you stressed the fluidity of it, that it's a guide, it's not a mandate, or you got to do this. I wanted to refer to something, and a member Goddard-Bowler mentioned a bit about this, and it refers to the density, the housing density. I really wanted to just ask, I'm curious about, you mentioned that you got the municipalities involved so that they could speak about the development and housing that were going on in their specific areas. How exactly did you facilitate that? Did you just go with, you know, of course, you're in Crystal Lake, being the largest city, you're going to be looking at what's going on there. So did you just get someone from every major city? How did you facilitate that? And what kind of cooperation? I'd just like for you to speak a little bit on that process.
Sure, you bet. It's a good question. And if you'd like, I can address some of the first questions or concerns as well. We reached out to every municipality in the county. There are several of them. Most of them participated pretty well throughout the entire process. They were given samples of drafts as we went through them, worked on them. They were given drafts of the land use recommendations we ultimately came up with. They provided their input along the way. Most of them are represented by their planning individuals or someone else at the organization. But we met with them, specifically just them as a group. Several of them came to different RPC meetings in attendance as well, in addition to ones or events just for them. But all along the way, they were involved, given drafts, provided discussion to make sure something that we were proposing wasn't contrary to what they thought would be viable for them, to make sure they're going to be the strategic partners in the next, as this plan is enveloped. And I think, and the reason why it's so critical to have their input along the way, is as you indicated, almost all the development is within or immediately adjacent to their areas. And when they come in at some of the densities that we talk about here, and again, they're not hard recommendations, they're projection densities. They may very well be higher than we indicate here based on what some of the municipalities said, and they would be burdened then with the annexation and the infrastructure and the utilities and the zoning, which is why they're immediately adjacent and within their growth and planning areas. And so you know, in the state of Illinois, a municipality in their comprehensive plans can plan a mile and a half beyond their jurisdiction. So the municipalities in McHenry County are planning into county area. They don't have authority at this point, but developers, given that, could propose a development there and propose to be annexed into those municipalities. So they were involved throughout, along the way. We knew they were going to be critical to seeing this happen over time. And in a lot of the things that we talk about here when we say these are the numbers for the county, the county, McHenry County, includes a lot of municipalities. So we're aware of some of the utility and infrastructure limitations of the county, some of the development practices of the county, but that was factored in with the development practices projected and likely to be increased based off of municipal discussions, and all of that density is around them, not out into the county. So we're very confident about the numbers we put in here in terms of easily being able to accommodate the projection and not expanding more acreage out into the county, given the land use numbers that we have, including the two units per acre as a calculation for projection and land use assignment, together with all the different types of higher densities going from single-family down to mixed-use or multifamily within municipalities.
Okay, thank you. And just as a light comment, at the very end, under implementation, you had overtime, one word instead of overtime. My internal editor kicked in and saw that, so I thought, wow, somebody was thinking really fast here. So thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, any further comments, questions? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Okay, move on to new business. Do any members have items from next Tuesday's agenda they'd like to remove for discussion? Mr. Scala?
Yes, I have 315A, 17B27, and 18B1 through 4.
Ms. Greenow?
14A, 17B61, 17B...
Hold on. 17B6...
Well, actually, I'm out of order here. 17B.2.4, and 17B.6.1.
17B61?
Yes. Yeah, B61, 6.1.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, Ms. Greenow, 14A.
Yes, and I apologize. I had no ability or technology to watch the meeting. So I had a question on this. Do our current policies on the mental health boards, HR guidelines, or personnel policies have provisions for acting pay or additional duties for the pay for the compensation?
I'm not familiar with what the mental health, what the local guidelines are. This is what they have put forth, and in my consultation with council, it's clear they can do this. The Mental Health Act gives them the authority to establish compensation and set policies for its personnel.
Well, and that's what, you know, my understanding too, and I had just wondered, you know, what we had in our provisions, because it's always a good idea. And then I was wondering, are the positions that are picking up these extra duties salaried or hourly?
They're all salaried.
They're all salaried, okay. And then have we done this in other similar roles in the county or with the McHenry County Mental Health Board?
I won't speak for what the Mental Health Board has done. I will say that there have been instances in the general county organization where, because of vacancies, there has been a limited period with some amount of extra compensation. That has occurred. I won't, yeah. It's not standardized per se, so I can't say that this is...
Okay, and I just wanted to basically shed light on this for board members that might not be familiar with these situations. And it's not that it's not, that it's uncommon for people to receive stipends when taking on duties in a situation where there's a vacancy. For anyone who would be looking for a case for no, because I think it's always healthy to look at the negative, if there were, if these were minor tasks similar to an existing role that they're already performing, if there were budget limits, or if the board were facing funding issues, if the salaried or exempt positions might be able to absorb these roles in their positions already, and if there was no precedent or policy. My looking into these areas, I can't find anything that would cause us to have a case for no, but I'm throwing it out there in case anyone can, so that we could discuss this now and not have any issues. And I certainly wish I had been able to be at the finance committee, but I could not. So, there you go.
Seeing no further comment on that item, Mr. Scala, 15A?
Yes, under the Conservation District, there is no person to be appointed, so I'm trying to understand that.
Okay, so yeah, in case some of our board members are not aware, we had an abundance of excellent and highly qualified applicants to the board position for the Conservation District. And in committee, there was definitely a very robust discussion in the deliberations. And after careful consideration and alignment with the majority of the Ped board, I intend to appoint John Hennings to that position.
So that'll be added?
That'll be added when we update the agenda on Friday.
I lobbed that softball to you so you could do that.
Thank you, sir.
Good. Okay, that's it, thank you.
Next item, Ms. Greenow, 17B24.
Again, I apologize that I did not have time to go back and find out the answer to this question, but is there a net cost on this? I see that it's for efficiencies and positions that have already been in duties.
So it is a net reduction?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, 10,000. It's a slight increase to general fund and a slight decrease to the...
Okay, and I apologize. I just had nowhere with all our technology. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Scala, 17B27?
Yes, so this is our budget policy, and I wanted to bring attention to items on this. So if you go to, if you call it up and go to Number 2 Budget Presentation, which is the first paragraph, which is on Page 5 of the document, I just wanted to make, so we talked about this at committee, and I'm pulling it up here. So at next month's committee, the whole meeting, we'll be doing the preliminary budget presentation. So at next month's committee, the whole meeting will be doing the preliminary budget presentation before the whole board. And I think there's two things, two objectives that I'm trying to obtain by doing this. One is to get a consensus of the board about the five different scenarios that we have in the budget policy and the direction that the board wants to go. So I'm gonna kind of have you, I want you to think about where you would like to be at for the budget going forward in November when we vote, based on the five different scenarios. To me, that provides direction to the staff, so that when we do all of the, either elected or department meetings with all the different committees, there can be a adequate discussion about their particular budgets and how that impacts the overall budget that the county board wants to see in November. We've, we've talked about it, Finance, the, I'll say, the frustration that we all have when it comes time to actually vote, and the things that go, even before that, in October, what goes on display. And we're trying to figure out a way to alleviate that stress. And to me, if we're providing clear direction to staff about what the expectation is about what we'll be voting on as a budget, you know, staff does a great job of coming back and giving us what we want. But if we don't provide clear direction, it's difficult for them to provide that. So I'm going to be asking at next month's committee, the whole, where the board, majority of the board, I've talked about this numerous times, you know, it needs 10 votes to pass, right? Or nine, and Mike has to make a decision. But we need 10 votes to pass. So the reality is, is that I need clear direction. And this year will be, again, a difficult year. We have increased costs. And, you know, again, for me, it's not that I don't have a personal opinion, but as Chair of Finance, my directive is to create a budget that gets passed. So providing that clear direction will be extremely helpful. And if, if that direction is such that we need to cut services, then, again, the department heads, both elected and appointed, need to know that, so that when they're coming to do your budget presentations to your committees, a good, healthy discussion can happen about what the services are that they're offering, what services are mandatory, what services are something that we've always done, and what that means dollar-wise to us as a savings. And so, and again, I'm not advocating one way or another, but to me, that will help set up the process much better, so that we can be successful come October and November, and we have a clear direction. I know, you know, I've already talked to some board members, and their comment to me is, well, you know, how do I tell you what I'm looking for when I don't know what the budget is? And, and that's a valid point. And we, we will have a somewhat rolled-up preliminary budget number next month, that you can kind of start to see how things are shaping. And really, with that, you will have a good idea of where we're headed. Again, things will change and things will be different, you know, come the end, but it should be, give you a pretty good idea. But ultimately, I'm just trying to look at what your thought process is. You know, we've had situations where board members have said, I'm not willing to take new growth or any CPI, period. I don't care what the budget looks like, I don't care what happens to services, that's what I want. Great, if that's where we're going, then that's, that's, we need to know that. If it's, hey, I'm willing to take new growth, but I'm not willing to take any new CPI, great, that's where we're gonna go. If it's, I'm willing to take new growth, I'm willing to take some CPI, don't know how much that is. CPI is lower than it was last year, so even the available revenue is going to be lower. That's fine. If it's, I'm willing to take new growth, CP, and all of CPI, and whatever that is, is what it is, I, just some direction. To me, staff is great, staff will provide the information that we need, but we need to provide some direction. So that's kind of what that first paragraph, page five, is all about, and that's what we'll be talking about next month. If you go to number 16, which is on page 16, which is Position Reclassification, this was brought up by Brian Sager at the committee, and part of the discussion was, we didn't really know what, what we were, it's number 16, I'm trying to go back here, sorry. 15, 16, I got the wrong page.
Page 10.
Page 10, thank you. So at the committee, there was a discussion about what, what we had in policy regarding the bringing of job reclassifications. And Pete had mentioned that he thought that might be an issue. Pete did do some research, and the wording that's here is in conflict with what, I can't remember what it was, Pete, the...
The Salary Administration Policy, I mean, there's a specific reference in the budget policy that says, this stuff will be handled by the Salary Administration Policy. We went back and checked the Salary Administration Policy.
Okay.
So it would be my preference to strike that when you, when you vote on Tuesday evening, and allow staff to kind of come back and square those. If it is the intent to limit when any additions can take, or any adjustments to compensation can take place, I'd like to handle that in the Salary Administration Policy, and we'll bring that to Administrative Services next month.
Okay, so that would be a modification to this that I'll make on Tuesday night, then. So those are the only two things for the budget policy.
Okay. Mr. Curtis?
I just wanted to thank you, Mike, for the great explanation of this. On the scenarios of the CPI, I'm assuming the one with the red line area, that the one with all the everything crossed out, that scenario one is a 3% decrease. And then my next question is, altogether, is, is on all of the scenario CPI numbers that were red line changes, those include what we have to use for this year's CPI?
Yeah, so the CPI, so I'm just getting to your different scenarios here. So we took out...
Page three.
Yeah, page, well, page two and page three, but we took out all the stuff about mental health, because that's no longer germane. And then we, the CPI numbers that you're seeing there are, are what is the actual CPI for, for this fiscal year.
Okay, that's what I just wanted, make sure I understood that.
Right.
Okay, so you have no further comment on that item?
Sorry, I got one.
Just to be clear, just to be clear, Mike, scenario one is contemplating a 3% decrease,
right?
Yes, that is correct. It still, it still has that. So it'd be, it'd be no new growth, no CPI, and a 3% decrease from, from this current year's budget.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Grino, 17B61?
Thank you. So I, I wanted to make sure that I understood that we would be endorsing a zero traffic deaths in McHenry County by 2040, correct? That would be a goal?
Goal.
Okay. In a state where cannabis is legal, alcohol's legal, of course, and the ability to obtain a driver's license can be decided by a governor who does a catch and release program, endorses illegals to do whatever, well, that we have no control over, what is the purpose? I mean, I, I know that I wasn't a part of this, and I, I don't have, can someone give me some idea on how we could ever make such a goal, when we, we don't have any say on what we can do in our county, on these, I mean, we know for a fact that wherever you have cannabis being legal, that traffic fatalities increase significantly, I mean, right there. So can somebody fill me in on what is this about? Where did this come from?
I won't speak to immigration policy or cannabis, but there are things we can't control.
Well, there are things that we control, but these are factors...
There are things we can't control, and with, with the...
You're talking zero?
With the completion of Random Road in three summers from now, you know, that's gonna be our last really significant roadway project for a number of years, and I do see, and I do see that some of the resources of that transportation is going to be about proving intersections and moving towards a goal of zero fatalities. Will that happen? Of course not. There are accidents, but we want to minimize those accidents, and we want to reduce those opportunities for accidents.
Well, I mean, you're, and I, and this is our place to discuss this, I mean, honestly. And you're putting a situation where we would be saying that we're putting a completely unrealistic, I mean, if you are going to have cannabis, these factors that we have no control over, that significantly, I mean, could we even have, before we would vote on something like this, what are the number of traffic deaths that are by people who have, that are driving without a license, that are driving under the influence of cannabis or alcohol? Could we even have tho, those numbers for things that we'd have no control over, because we're gonna...
I think, I think the thought is that the things we can influence.
Right, but we're, we're saying zero.
The things we can influence on our county, on our county right of ways, that's where we'd like to make some investments.
We're saying zero. And so then we look like jerks if we vote for something that's completely unrealistic that we have no control over. I mean, if we want to rewrite it and say, for the things that we have control over, we'd like to have zero, and put it in a classification, that could be something, but this is, who could do this?
Certainly, staff's intention is not to make you look like a jerk, so I don't know.
Could we write it in such a manner that say that we'll have zero traffic deaths for things that we can have influence for? I mean, could we at least do that? And, and say, zero traffic deaths excluding cannabis, alcohol, unlicensed drivers, uninsured drivers?
I think if you wanted something like, simply that which we could control, that would perhaps be possible, but I don't think you want to list all the other reasons why we wouldn't have control.
Yeah, because I, I could not vote for zero traffic deaths for things that we have no control over, and I, I hate that, because it's certainly a lofty thing, and it just, it's, am I alone? So I just had to get that out there. We vote on this Tuesday night?
It's on the agenda, yes.
Right, am I alone here? I, am I, I mean...
Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Chair. Correct me if I'm wrong, if I've read this correctly, we need to have this policy for certain grant money to be available to us at the federal level? Scott?
That is correct. So adopting this policy will result in us being eligible for federal Safe Streets and Roads for All funding. Without a policy of either Vision Zero or a crash reduction goal, we would not be eligible for this funding source. So going back to the, the last question, this is your policy. You can set the number of acceptable traffic fatalities at whatever you would like. This is, the department's goal is zero fatalities, and that's why we brought this forward today. But the county board can choose a number higher than zero, if that's something you're interested in doing.
I think that, my other, my other thing is that, working in an oil refinery for 15 years, working in gas delivery for 15 years, when I was with Mobile Oil, we had zero as our goal for accidents and injuries every single year. Okay? And that made it that goal, because then you strive for getting that perfection. UPS has zero accident goals for their drivers, okay, one of the largest transportation companies in the world. Most transportation companies do, because they recognize the impact that has on their employees and how they think about things. And I'm assuming, as we go, we go through this, the education we're trying to do to the public to help them be focused on those things. So I don't think a zero goal is something to shy away from. I think it's something that's out there on the horizon, that we work toward and we look toward, and we strive toward. When we get there, you bring up some very good points. There's things we can't control, but having a goal like this helps us keep moving in that direction.
Mr. Scala?
Yeah, I brought up this exact comment at Transportation, and, you know, part of, part of what, I wasn't going where you were going, but I, I talked about the fact that funding is always an issue with it. So, you know, we can have a goal, and it's great to have a goal, but there, there wasn't anything in the document that talked about pending funding, right? So, and the fact that we can get federal grants for covering most of it, that's fabulous, but realization is, we still have a match on any of these grants. So that was more my concern, going back, you know, again, going back to the whole budget side of things, you know, which naturally, all that would still come before the board for approval, but that was kind of where I was going with it. I think it's, it's a, it's a goal that we should have, a goal that we can hopefully attain, or try and attain, but yes, there are so many outside factors. So as long as we can, as long as there are outside influences that we can't control, but the things that we can, this is a worthwhile goal. We, we have seen a reduction in seriousness of crashes where we've made road improvements, and so it does work, and it's something that we should be doing, and I, I'm happy to have that as part of the plan.
Mr. Kunkel?
I believe this is already policy with Transportation anyway, but in this county, our actions, our engineering, our construction, and our people are all based on this hope, this wish, this zero policy. I'm all for this zero policy. I, too, am realist and realize it's probably a dream. My company also has this exact same zero policy. In 40 years, we have not achieved it, but we're working at it, so.
Ms. Campbell?
I think it's, some comments made have been well said, so I'm just really supportive of this vision. I think it's something that we need to be doing. Obviously, there are things that are outside of our control, but there's many things that are within our control, and we should be implementing them, and you, you aim high with the hope that you get at least close to it, so I will be in support of it. Thanks.
Ms. Van Hoff?
Yes, I just wanted to weigh in on that also. 18 years of working in manufacturing, we had a goal of zero lost time accidents, and we achieved that for certain quarters in the year. So when, when I came up with that idea, there were people who thought, we're never gonna do that. And so they were, they were really surprised when we did. We made it be a competitive kind of lighthearted thing between the departments, and we would be posting the results every day, every day we were looking at what happened in the shop. And we achieved it for three quarters out of four the first year was implemented, and that was because of the way we approached it. So having a goal is high. I do appreciate, remember, Grino's comments, there is a concern, there are some things that we can't control, but there are a whole bunch of things that we can, and we can't just give up because we have maybe some unfunded mandates that are out there. We always have to be aiming for those goals. So I, I really like that idea. It may be something that is a pie in the sky, but maybe one quarter we will hit that. So that's my comment on that.
Okay, seeing no further comments. 18B, Mr. Scala?
So these are the speed reduction ordinances, and based on board rules, they are required to come before the board, regardless of the vote at the Transportation Committee. There were four of them that were voted upon, and just to save you all some work, B1 failed six to one, B2 was amended and then passed five to two, B3 failed six to one, and B4 failed five to two. So, and then I pulled this because I didn't... So, and I pulled this because I didn't, Jim wasn't here, so I just, I was not trying to take over your job. I just was trying to highlight that we, you know, there's, there was two things I think that came out of this whole discussion. One, that the Transportation Committee had asked for some further information when the information is provided to the committee so that we would have other things to look at in regard to it. One was crash data and I think the other one was who was, who was actually requesting the speed study to be done, whether it was in-house or, you know, so staff wanted to do it or it was outside request. So those are the things that came out of that. So Jim, sorry not to take your thunderous cheer, but that was, that was what happened with those.
Mr. Gotamaller?
Yeah, again, I'm not on Transportation Committee at this point in my career, but we do have on your desk from the Lake and Hills Police Department, they would like us to pass 18B3. I think it's appropriate, we just talked about zero traffic fatalities in the last discussion and now we're talking about not lowering speed limits because it's inconvenient for some board members.
Ms. Campbell?
Okay, so thank you, Joe, for pointing out the letter. This obviously is something that I'm very passionate about, so I'm going to take a few minutes to kind of give my thoughts on this. I do realize that there is the idea that county roads are meant to move traffic through the county, getting people from point A to point B in a reasonable amount of time. And there's been a lot of resistance to lowering speed limits precisely for that reason. But conditions have changed and in many areas, and it's, looking specifically at Pyatt Road is the one I am looking at. It's not only used by drivers who are passing through getting to and from work, but by hundreds of residents who use Pyatt Road to get to and from their homes. Pyatt Road no longer bisects open fields but entire residential neighborhoods, creating a barrier instead of serving as a means of neighborhood connection. And to get a better understanding, I mean, I don't live there, so I actually went over there and talked to as many neighbors who would actually answer their door. I talked to about 20 people plus, I would say that there were a couple who didn't care. One said it didn't matter because nothing would change. But 18 plus were like adamant that the speed needed to come down. Some were comfortable with going to 40 miles per hour to match the speed from Willow south to Algonquin Road. Some examples of when we talk about zero, Vision Zero, there are a lot of people, I was surprised at how many people I talked to who had actually been impacted by an accident or some incident along that road. One said her son had been rear-ended trying to turn left onto Oak off of Pyatt. One man said he and his family were rear-ended on Pyatt when they two were trying to turn off of the road. There was an adult parent who was killed trying to turn off of Willow onto Pyatt. In that particular case, the car coming north was, had the right turn signal on. We all know, don't, don't assume that that turn signal is, they're going to actually turn, so they pulled out. But maybe perhaps if it had been a lower rate of speed, the outcome would have been different. A mother described trying to cross at Willow, we have a flashing beacon light there. She no longer will do it. She, her kids are prohibited from using it and they can only go if she's with them and even she is saying she's not even sure she's going to try anymore. As they were trying to cross one day, they were very, they were very fearful because a car came screeching to a halt, barely stopping before the intersection because they weren't paying attention, traveling at a high rate of speed and had to stop suddenly. I talked to some fathers who were out there with their kids and they said that they tried to get across. They'll be halfway through, it would have been open, one lane to stop from, the other lane was clear. And in the meantime, a car comes barreling up and nobody stops. You know, several cars will go by and nobody stops. You know, like I said, some people were disillusioned. You know, there, one person said, is it true you have to have three people die before you get a stoplight? And of course, that's not true at all. But two years ago, we had an opportunity to vote on this and it never came forward. And so I really, there's a part of me that says you can't blame our residents for believing that we don't care. I did want to get into a little bit of my concern about that flashing beacon. I don't want to get into a lot of detail because I know we've had a long meeting already. But the flashing beacon is typically allowed in areas where it's 40 miles per hour and technically at Willow it is. But just beyond Willow going north, it goes to 50. So the speed of traffic coming down at that intersection is what makes that intersection so dangerous. It goes from 50 to 40 at Willow. Going north, the problem is, is as you're heading up that hill, there's a sign that says it's 50 miles an hour coming up. Well, you know, every driver is going to start the accelerator because they're going to be able to get to 50 and they're going to 50 before they even get to the sign. That creates a problem at that intersection. I know that the argument is people will always speed and it doesn't, and it's not, you're not going to change driver behavior and if you don't enforce it, then nothing's going to change. And I don't think that's completely true. If you look at Lakewood Road where we reduced the speed preliminarily, we're finding that the overall speed of traffic has in fact reduced. So it was a minor reduction of five miles per hour, 20 seconds over a two-mile stretch of road, and people are feeling more comfortable. Because it went to 40, we have a flashing beacon light there. We've connected two neighborhoods at Albrecht Road. People are using it and they're very, very happy to have it. I do think it's important that we follow the advice of our professional staff. They bring these forward for a reason and I would also highlight the fact that there are many of these studies that are, that they do that do not recommend a speed reduction, okay? So the letter, you have it, I just wanted for the record from Chief Manino. He, with input from their village president Ray Bogandowski and his approval, he goes on to write, "I am writing to express my support for the proposed speed reduction on Pyatt Road in the area of Willow Street to East Oak Street. As a police officer for over 19 years and now chief of police in the Lake and the Hills, I have responded to and/or have been made aware of many crashes at those intersections. I believe that this change is a step in the right direction to reducing crashes and is a vital safety and well-being, and is vital for safety and well-being of our community. While I don't purport to be an expert in this area, I do know from training and experience that the faster a vehicle is traveling, the greater stopping distance is needed. Thus, when vehicles are traveling at lower speeds on Pyatt Road, shorter stopping distances would be needed to avoid a crash, hopefully lowering the severity of the injuries in the event of collision. I urge you to consider the benefits that a speed reduction will bring. Lastly, I also urge further action to bring traffic controls to the intersection of East Oak Street and Pyatt and possibly Willow Street and Pyatt. A traffic crash earlier this year in January at Pyatt Road and Willow Street sparked many comments on social media regarding traffic safety around these two intersections. I contacted staff at the Department of Transportation who were extremely responsible, responsive and professional, sharing the community concerns. I've been informed that further studies are in process, but I wanted to express my support for further studies regarding the necessity and feasibility of traffic controls at these intersections. Thank you for your attention to these important issues for our community. I would urge everybody to please support this reduction."
Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Chair. I want to echo everything that Carolyn said in regards to this speed reduction. I do want to point out two things. One, I travel up Pyatt Road pretty much every day to and from my office, which is on Route 31. So I'm very familiar with that road and will really admit that going to Sealewood is always not something that happens on that road by anybody driving it. Want to point out from Algonquin Road to just north of Rackhow, it's about three miles. And in that three mile stretch, there's three speed limits on that road. Starts at 40 at Algonquin Road, once you get to Willow, it becomes 50. And once you get to the storage shed on the west side of the road, it becomes 45. So there doesn't seem to be any reason why it cannot extend at 40 miles an hour, 45 miles an hour from Willow till you get to Oak Street. That is all residential in that area primarily and then it becomes industrial after that. It would still allow a 50 mile speed limit between Oak Street and the storage shed, which I'm not sure why, there's industrial on the right, there's a large trucking company there. It's always pulling trucks onto the road at Pyatt and pulling off and traffic gets a slowdown anyways for those. So I support lowering this speed limit. Thank you.
Mr. Kearns?
I just wanted to ask if, you know, Mike brought up about the crash studies and records that we did not see at committee, they weren't on the attachments. And I was wondering, could we send those to all the board members? I guess I would make that request if that's possible. Send that to each of the board members so they can make a little bit better decision on this one especially.
Do that. Yes, we can do that.
Okay, and that's all I ask on that. So everybody can make their decision in good conscience. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Pete, you got a report for us today?
You'll notice Tom Anarola is not in the room, even though he had an agenda item on. He begged if he could be out at Valley High because the state was out today at nine o'clock to do our final, final inspection on the memory care unit. Tom emailed just about 10 o'clock to Scott and I that it went well and we passed, so that's good to announce. We thought, we thought that would be the case. We thought that would be the case, but it's still good to officially hear. I'm going to let Tom announce the official opening date. I do know that it's going to be right after Memorial Day within a week or so, so it's coming fast. We have residents already lined up and waiting to move in and staff has been hired, so we're ready to go. And I said, maybe Tuesday night, we can have a formal announcement of when that move-in date is going to be. The second thing I wanted to mention was our strategic plan. Of course, we all got together a couple weeks ago to kind of develop that, where we're going with the strategic plan. Scott and Alicia and I met with the NIU team on Monday of this week and really went through all that they had put together. And it was amazing that all that they had put together about our meeting. And we challenged each other on some areas and we're expecting another version of that document by the end of next week. Our expectation is that we will share that version of document with the entire board. So everybody will have a chance to get eyes on it. We will also take some time at the Administrative Services Committee then, which is like June 6th or thereabouts. We'll kind of see how, see how close we are, let's put it that way. I think we're going to find that we've got about four to six kind of yes or no's or A's or B's kind of forked in the road decisions to make. Maybe we can, maybe we can get that done at Administrative Services in June. I would reserve judgment there. But I want to assure everybody that whatever comes out of Administrative Services, we're going to go back to the whole board and we are not going to have this on your agenda in June. We've got enough to do in June. German Scala has talked about what we're going to do with regard to the budget. Carrie, Kathy and I kind of started to noodle out the PowerPoint for your June call. So I, we don't want to do strategic plan also. So it'll give us an extra breath and we'll probably come back to Administrative Services again in July. Perhaps, the best case scenario, we'll have a strategic plan for you in July, maybe it goes into August. But that's kind of where I see the next steps falling out and I think we're getting close. But if we feel like we need to bring everybody back, everybody back together, we will. That's where I'm at.
Okay. Mr. Kaminski, did you have something for Mr. Austin?
Nothing, Mr. Austin. I couldn't get in. Go back to our zero study. I think Mr. Scott had pointed out, and I may be wrong, but by passing this, this opens the doors to other communities to get grant funding and whatnot. I may be mistaken on that and I wanted to ask him that question. Sorry for the delay in technology here.
Yes, Mr. Kaminski, you're correct. So by passing this zero fatality goal, it not only allows the county to apply for that federal funding source, the Safe Streets and Roads for All program, but also all of our 17 township road districts can apply, our 29 municipalities can apply. So it unlocks not just money for us, but for our local governments as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Campbell, did you have something?
I did and I apologize. I meant to say this during member comment. Just real quickly, the local emergency planning committee and our coordinating council are meeting today. It's the first time I'm able to actually do it in time for you to let you know. It's at 1:30. We're going to be talking about Senate Bill 71, which is about the schools and hazardous materials. And then the Red Cross and United Way will be coming and talking to our coordinating council. That's at the Old Village Hall in Cary, 655 Village Hall Drive. Thank you.
We do have a need for a brief executive session today. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to enter executive session for pending litigation per 5 ILCS 120/2C11. Mr. Scala makes the motion. Mr. Gotamaller seconds. Kathy, we'll need a roll call vote, please.
O'Ton. Campbell.
Yes.
Collins. Gotamaller. Greeno. Hendricks.
Yes.
Kaminski. Kearns. Crager. Conkle. Sager. Shorten. Scala. Smith. Sullivan. Thomas. Van Hoff. Von Bergen. Bueller.
Yes.
For our online participants, we're going to have to disconnect now.